It is November the twentieth, seven P M. Time for this regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education to begin. Welcome, everyone. We appreciate you being here. We're going to begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Lillian Terrell and Kyrie Bartel of Elliott Elementary School. Come on up, students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Students, before you go, we'd like you to come up here to the beginning so we can get a picture of you. And also, I think that you have your principal with you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Lane, will you tell us a little bit about these fine students?
Yes, this is.
So nice to be here tonight, by the way.
So this is what we call our soaring eagles. So we have with us from Ms. Stefis' class Kyrie Bartel. And what Ms. Stefis was saying is Kyrie is a hardworking student. She does her absolute best to be a role model for others. She gives her schoolwork her best effort. What her family says is she plans to be a therapist for children when she grows up, a child psychologist. She has a dog named Miggy. He's fat and sassy, and she's getting a beta fish for Christmas. Her favorite thing about Elliott is recess. She loves having that free time to play with her friends that she's made there. She has a brother named Vincent, who's about to be two. And then, from Ms. Alabutti's class, we have Lillian here. Her teacher says she embodies strong leadership, responsibility, and respect. She is constantly demonstrating these qualities even when no one is watching. What her family says is Lillian is part of a big family. Dad is Matt, Mom Sarah, older sister Liberty, older brothers Leland and Wayne, and two younger brothers Samuel and Wyatt. Lillian has five cats, Dixon, Church, Biggie Smalls, Meow Meow, and Rocket. I did have to ask Meow Meow and Rocket if it was that same name or two separate names. They have four turtles, Raphael, Michelangelo, Leonardo, and Donatello. Can you guess what? Ninja Turtles. Three goldfish, Betsy, Bobby, and Narlin. Did I say that right? Narlin? All right. Two dogs, Nala and Nikita, and a tortoise named Taco. Lillian's favorite thing about Elliott is that she always sees everyone playing at recess. There's never a kid without a friend. When Lillian grows up, she wants to be a teacher. She's leaning more towards music or art. She also wants to be a cheer coach.
You see, they brought some family members with them. I'd like to thank the family for coming here. Thank you so much. Well, thank you. Did you have homework to do tonight? You don't? Hey.
They were ready. That's why they're soaring eagles.
You got a photograph here? Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is one nine one point two three, which is a swearing in of new board member Bradley Gray. Mr. Gray? Who's going to perform the swearing in? And his wife, Irene. Please begin. Yeah. Yeah, we need him. Hurry up.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of the state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of Wayne Westland Community Schools.
Of Wayne Westland Community Schools.
Wayne County.
Wayne County.
Michigan.
Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And you promised your wife, so you've got to keep that one. Next item on our agenda, one nine one point two four, is roll call attendance. Ms. Hines, please.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Here.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Hines, here. Ms. May?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
President Cox?
And I'm here.
Seven zero. We have a full board.
One nine two point two four, citizens' comments on agenda items. This portion of the meeting reserved for citizens wishing to address the board on items which appear on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the one nine four point two four, which is the election of officers of the Board of Education. The Office of Vice President is currently vacant. Is there a motion on the Office of Vice President? Is there a motion on the Office of Vice?
Make a motion.
Mr. Neal?
For Dr. Weaver.
Motion for Dr. Weaver. Member of the Board of Education. Are there other nominees?
Hines.
I'll put my name in the race. Why not?
Ms. Hines?
I nominate Ms. Hines.
Ms. Hines, okay. Are there others? Okay, Dr. Weaver was nominated first. Roll call vote for Dr. Weaver to assume the Office of Vice President of the Board. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, no. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, congratulations, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Gray, how'd you like that seat? Pretty nice?
I think I need that.
Get your nameplate. Um, get your nameplate. All right, then. Did you make your donkey donuts? No, that's not yours.
I can't have that on this side of the desk.
Vice President can't have donkey donuts?
No.
Okay, the board once again is whole. Congratulations, Dr. Weaver.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next item, one nine five point two four, is a consent agenda. Is there a motion on consent?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Support?
Support.
Support? Any discussion?
Yes, I have one question.
Please, Ms. May.
I was just wondering, there are a couple of field trips in here that have already taken place, so I'm wondering why we are approving them after the fact.
A couple of votes that have taken place?
A couple of field trips that are under close cover that have already taken place. They were on like the November eleventh and twelfth. There were three of them. Last year, Stevenson Middle School, seventh and eighth grade, Wayne Memorial, ninth through twelve.
Okay, well, I can't speak to that right now. Do you want to remove them from consent?
Well, yeah, I guess. I just don't know why we would approve them after the fact.
Is there a reason for this? I didn't know that for field trips. Yeah, let's read, let's. If the maker of the motion and the supporter of the motion agrees, we'll remove those items from the consent agenda for tonight. We'll table them until the next meeting.
I agree.
Are you in agreement? You in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion on consent? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
President Cox?
Yes.
Seven zero.
And let me just state that if any member of the board sees consent and there's a problem with consent, if you could send an email prior to the meeting, we'll remove it and we'll vote on it separately rather than wait to the meeting. So one nine seven point two four, Board of Education Committee reports. Ms. May?
Thank you. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools met Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, beginning at four thirty P M via Zoom platform. Mrs. Polakovich presented a proposal to purchase nine-one-one simulators using the Service Learning Grant. She also presented quotes to purchase three water containers to be used by the Fire Academy. This purchase will be funded with the Perkins Grant. Ms. Samara presented the renewal of Informed K-12 software using general funds. Dr. Dignan shared information for the board along with district highlights. Mrs. Campbell explained both the investment report and check register. Committee members shared closing comments. The meeting was adjourned at four forty-two P M. The next meeting is scheduled to take place on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three via Zoom at four thirty P M.
Thank you, Ms. May. One nine eight point two four is a review and approval of business service items. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item I have for the board's consideration is a recommendation to approve the annual licensing of Informed K-12, our software for digitized workflow processes, approvals, and such.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neal. Support? 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 Okay, motion dies for support. Support by Weaver. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Can you tell us a little bit more about what Informed K-12 is?
Yes.
And also, how would the district be affected if we voted no tonight?
Okay, Informed K-12 is, as I explained, a digitized process. So we have myriad forms for various approvals, budget transfers, conferences, field trips, days off, attendance, and countless other things that used to be done on paper and flowed through a workflow approval process that took days on end. And now, all those forms are within this software. So an employee can go into the software, select a form, fill it out, and send it on to the appropriate approvers. And depending on what form they select, the workflows are built in. So it knows who needs to see what and approve any budgets or attendance or anything like that. This is, I believe, we're going into our third year with it. We've had a year and a half of use with it. To stop this now would basically collapse all those.
Okay, enough said.
All those processes because this is the only way they exist now.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion?
Yes, Hines. I'm just concerned about the budget shortfalls in the general fund and just spending money out of the general fund. Is there any way we can look at other programs to save us money with this particular process? Any other companies?
Yes, we can. I haven't been here to know which other companies were reviewed when this one was selected. I personally have experience with a few other, such as DocuSign and Adobe. Adobe is not nearly as dynamic with the workflows as Informed K-12 is. And DocuSign is considerably more expensive than Informed K-12. But we can do any process of review that the board would like, absolutely.
Other discussions?
So this fund is coming out of the general fund?
Yes.
Is there other discussion?
Yeah, I might have missed this.
Mr. Gray?
But when does this renewal go into effect?
In December.
December, beginning of the month, or the end of the year?
I apologize. I don't know. This was a recommendation from an employee who's on vacation this week. And I don't know the exact date. I just know it's December.
I can answer that if that's okay. It's December first. We talked about it on our finance.
Just for clarification, am I correct that this is the system that the district uses, where we used to use paper permission slips, and each individual teacher would send things out and receive things back? And this basically eliminates all of the manual exchanging of information and what have you, and it provides a streamlined system so that the entire district can know what's going on with any individual field trip or whatever the case may be?
That's correct.
Okay. And the cost of this for the district a year?
Forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Okay.
Did I say that right? Forty-five, forty?
Further discussion? Mr. Neal?
Just a comment. We have been using the system for quite some time. As mentioned, we'd have to sort of reinvent the wheel. In other words, we'd have to abandon the automated system and go back to paper documents. I mean, somebody's going to have to generate those documents, and somebody is now going to have to be in charge of receiving documents and then sending them out to where they belong. If the system is automated and we've been paying for it all along, this is essentially a renewal. I see the most logical thing would be to continue what has been in place. That's my thing.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Ms. May?
So I think I would just, I thought about this when we were in finance, and I just, I would like to share that when we talk about it being a system and how it would be disruptive to a system that we have in place, what we've collapsed classrooms, and that's been disruptive to students. So we have to take those pieces into account when we make our decisions. That's just a thought that I have in my head when I think about systems and how we're being disruptive. And we have to make sure when we're saying we're disruptive, we're going to be disruptive across the board if that's what's necessary, but not disruptive in one area and not in another.
Luana?
I just, is there any possible way that we can pay for a half a year as opposed to a whole twelve months?
I'm not sure, but I will certainly ask Ms. Samara to check into that.
Okay, there's a motion and support. There's been discussion. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Hines, no. President Cox?
Yes.
Okay, so we got one, two, three, four yeses and three no's. Motion passes.
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The second recommendation I have for the board tonight is to approve the purchase of Omnicom nine-one-one simulators through the Save Corporation for the Career and Tech Centers, Police, Fire, and EMS academies.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neal. Support by Dr. Weaver. Discussion?
I would like to know. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I missed this. Did you say the funding source?
I didn't. It's funded fully by the Service Learning Grant.
Okay, thank you.
Service Learning.
Luana?
Okay, that was my question also. And what is this that they are using for? And do they already have it, or are we getting more, or?
It's a simulator, a nine-one-one simulator for the classrooms that are involved in emergency response. And again, I don't know.
Do they have one right now?
No, they don't.
They don't?
No, it's for our EMTs, fire, and the law enforcement.
All right, right. I know what it is, but I was just wondering if they have it.
Yeah, they do not have it.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Next item, Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. President. And my final recommendation is for the board to approve the purchase of three forty-foot watertight containers for the Career and Tech Ads Fire Academy. This will also be used for training simulation. And this is fully funded, nine thousand, two hundred and seven dollars through Perkins Funds, which is a federal grant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines. Support?
Support.
By Ms. May. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Seven zero. Motion carries.
Next item, one nine nine point two four, is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for citizens wishing to address the board on any issue at all. Does not need to appear on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to come and speak with the board?
I have one. President Cox?
Yes. Is it Kyle Johnson? Is it, I'm sorry, I have, is it Johnson, Mr. Johnson from Illinois Street? Ms. Johnson?
Pass.
Pass, okay. Changes mind. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yes, I have one right here.
Let's pass that on to Ms. Hines, please. Ms. Hines? Thank you. And Bart Stell? It's Bart Stell.
Right here.
Please. Up to the lectern here?
It's right there.
Sir? Yeah, sure. Do you want to pass it to the board? Thank you. Go slow so we can get them passed out. We're keeping these binder clips, too.
Oh, yeah. It was a pretty expensive. Thank you for allowing us to have time. Katina, did you want to come up as well? My name is Omari Bart Stell. I want to thank the board for giving us a few minutes as well as all of the parents and everyone in the room. We represent a company called Pedagogics. We're the principal partners. And we provide alternative mental health programs as well as safety programs to students in various faculties. So I've done a seven-year program with the Detroit Lions as well as in conjunction with Haven, Wayne County Safe, which is now Avalon Healing Services, as well as Sasha Center. And we did work on healthy masculinity, nonviolent bystander intervention, boosting morale and mental acuity for students, emotional intelligence, dating violence, more specifically, because we know that dating violence is very prevalent in high schools. So we have created a program that works in conjunction and eligible for the thirty-one A A funding that is available by the state. I'm not sure if this district has already applied for that or is familiar with it. But it's a very, very amazing piece of legislation that allows schools to bring in different types of alternative programming for mental health as well as safety planning. Personal safety, physical safety, as far as locks on your doors, different things like that. So we cover more mental health, but we also have safety. And we think that our program would be very, very well suited for your district and for any district. This is funding that is available for every school district in the state. Unfortunately, we have a very short deadline for each district to apply for this funding. It is only till December tenth this year, but there's over a hundred and fifty million dollars statewide for this program. So each district has been allotted a very specific amount for the amount of students that they have. And I'll let Katina Coward speak if she has anything she wants to add to that.
Yes, as my partner mentioned, there is a per pupil allotment currently estimated at two hundred and twenty dollars per pupil for each student in the state. The governor has already allocated that money. That is an estimated amount, meaning that if more students transition to your school or what have you, that amount would greatly flow to your direction. Out of that money, fifty percent of that money is expected to be used in supplemental services, meaning not already pre-existing services. There are some school districts that believe that this is just a continuation of thirty-one A, but that is not how the legislation reads. The legislation reads that it is in supplement to that. And so, as a result of that, what we would love to do is to undergird programs that you already have. But we have a lot of alternative programs that would supplement and benefit. I have metrics, as Omari has mentioned. But between the two of us, we have decades of experience. I, myself, have worked in the state of Michigan, my home state, North Carolina, as well as South Carolina, offering supplemental education services towards academics and mental health. We are both nation and, to some degree, international spoken word artists. So we've also done arts programs in schools. The founding principle of my premise in education is understanding the role that emotions play and a student's ability to learn and retain that which is learned. And consequently, traditional methods, though somewhat beneficial, are becoming vastly archaic, and we know that. There's nothing we can do to prevent that. But it is something we can do to help that transition. So the gap between the older styles of learning and the newer styles of learning are not such a great gulf that parents and family members are left lacking. With that being said, the same holds true for emotional well-being. As Omari also stated, and I will not be before you much longer, domestic violence, intimate partner violence, is growing at an alarming rate, and the pandemic did not help that. A lot of our students are witnessing it. They do not understand bystander techniques that would keep themselves and their family members or friends safe. And they do not have the wherewithal to prepare for exit strategies, which we all know that leaving is the most dangerous time in a domestic violence situation. A lot of the schools have been spending a lot of money on mental health, but they're forgetting this big, big, big chunk of reality. And as we turn on our news night after night, and we find that it's not limited to economic, social, spiritual, or any other, ramifications are very fast. And because of the vastness of the ramifications, we're here just asking for the opportunity to join forces with your board and help the students. Omari has given you information on how to reach us, but we would love to talk to any of the board members, one-on-one or in conjunction, so that we can also detail our ability to customize a plan specifically for the Wayne Westland school system.
And just briefly, we know every school has its own culture. We work with middle school and high school students. So we would love to, if allowed to work in any of your schools, we would love to have a point person at that particular school to help us understand the individual culture of their school because those pieces are very important to this work. And we know that not only do we want to teach students how to mentally deal with the days and the things they deal with on a daily basis, but we want to also help students understand how not to contribute negatively to others' mental health scenarios and situations. So hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to work.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming here and sharing this with us. I must add that the program objectives here are very intriguing and very interesting, and I have to think that the time has come to have conversations about this. We have your contact information. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And also, if you want to share that with any of your parents and ask them questions, they can reach out to us.
Well, of course, the administration is going to take a look at this. And, you know, we need to have a wider conversation. We're trying to make more and more services available to our students. But things like dating violence and healthier forms of masculinity, I know a lot of young men are dealing with a lot of problems right now, so I'd welcome that. Thank you for bringing this to us.
We look forward to hearing from you very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people that wanted to come up? Sir, did you fill out a sheet when you came in? Will you before you leave? Come on up and. We'd just like to know who you are before you leave. Fill out a sheet for us.
My name is Sean Crowley, and I live in Westland. And I'm a substitute teacher with Edge of Staff. I was recently substitute teaching for a vacancy at Stevenson Middle School. And the vacancy position is being collapsed, like the classroom is being collapsed, kind of like what was being mentioned earlier. And I believe the reason is for budget restraints. And I just wanted to clarify with you guys, if the issue is with budget restraints and stuff, then, like, how are we spending our money so that we don't have classrooms collapsing like this anymore, right? Because it's really negatively affecting the kids that were in my class as well as all the teachers at Stevenson Middle School. And like, is there discussion about how we can go? And, like, is there a discussion about how we can go on from this? I guess that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
That's all?
Are, is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to review and recommendations. Members of the Board of Education, Mr. Neal?
I have no comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, Mr. Neal, I, uh, forgot our superintendent.
Oh, no.
Mr. Superintendent.
After he talked, we'll see.
Just want to thank, uh, the elementary, uh, Elliott Elementary students for reciting the pledge. Uh, congrats to Mr. Page on the nomination. I'm welcome aboard. Um, also, we were awarded a grant for thirty-seven thousand from FASSA, uh, for the Completion Challenge Grant. Um, I want to recognize our Michigan, our College and Career Readiness Department. They won the Marino Award, which is a, award for districts' outstanding efforts to boost college access. Um, and again, this was awarded by the Michigan College Access Network. We have, uh, our Wayne Westland Early Middle College, uh, that's open to any current eighth, ninth, and tenth graders. We're having two forums, one, uh, January seventeenth at the William D. Ford Career Tech Center, and the other one, January thirty-first, which is going to be via Zoom. Um, we want to welcome Novi Public Schools that is coming to Elliott Elementary to observe on December fourth our literacy essentials in discipline area literacy. We're on the cutting edge there, and this is a direct reflection of our staff. Just a reminder, the fiasco of free cash is at Jefferson Barnes on December seventh from five to seven P.M. It's open to anybody, not just our students, but adults that can earn a GED or college credit. Um, we hope everybody takes time, uh, to unplug during the holidays and has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I turn it back.
Thank you, sir. Have you thought of anything, Mr. Neal?
Only to congratulate our, our newest member, Mr. Gray, and, um, very happy that you joined us. And that's it. Thank you.
What do you think, Luana? I started with him that time.
Your turn.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I'd like to thank the students from Elliott and the parents that took the time to bring them out, and the teachers and the principal that selected those, as far as to save the page. Um, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Gray for his seat as a board member, and, um, of course, my friend as vice president now. Congratulations on that. And, um, and I would like to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Don't overeat. Take some time to rest and take some time to enjoy your family. That's it. We celebrated Thanksgiving yesterday at my brother's house, and it was wonderful. I haven't seen my brother in twenty years. So I just encourage everybody to take some time and eat the turkey with families. And nine is one yesterday, maybe it'll win on Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Respect.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you to Lillian and Kyrie, as well as Mr. Lane, for, um, leading us in the pledge this evening. The students did a fantastic job. Um, I also like to welcome and congratulate Mr. Gray. So happy to have you as a part of our, um, board. And congratulations to Mr. Beebe for your work and, and getting that recognition for the district, so thank you for that. Um, I also just would like to, um, share or follow up, because at our last meeting, I said I would, needed to take a few minutes to process, and then I would have comments, so I wanted to make sure I came back with some comments. Um, and to let, um, everyone know that I did take some additional time to review our full audit report again. And so I know that several times it was asked about the, um, the question asked regarding the seventeen point six million dollar figure, and I believe Tanya shared this, but that information is in the full audit report on page thirty-five. And initially, my intent was to request a forensic audit, but after reviewing the full audit report a second time, I believe that the answers that we are seeking are in that report. And so at this point, I'm hopeful that after the holiday, our administration has plans to share a presentation with the board and the community regarding how we got to this point, how we will move forward, forward with as little impact as possible on our students and our staff, as well as what corrective actions will be taken to prevent this from happening again. And with that, I'm just going to say, to follow up behind Luana, with happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy this time with your family, relax. And I'm going to say, eat as much as you want to eat. And rest. So with that, happy Thanksgiving.
I'm going with your recommendation, Ms. May. Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to thank the students that came in today for, uh, the pledge of allegiance. Um, I also like to thank the people that came up and the community for the interviews, for the board. I was so impressed. It, we had some of the best, best candidates. It was amazing, really good people. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bradley for being a new board, uh, member, and I'd like to congratulate Vice President Weaver for your position. Um, I also like to say I was, uh, able to go to Ford Field to, um, watch them play, uh, with the Battle of the Bands. It was amazing. It was like, it was breathtaking to see them on Ford Field, and they were just competing against all these other bands, so that was amazing. Um, I was able to go to the HBCU, uh, Career Fair that, uh, Dr. Bebe had put on, and they have an amazing TikTok video. And I do post those on my pages. Um, Wayne West has been doing a really good, uh, job at, you know, publicizing all the good things, like the STEM, and so I try to put all the good news, the good news, you know, get it out there, because we do have to still grow our district. Unfortunately, we got a situation, we're going to get over it, it's going to be good, you know, we're going to move forward, but we still have to, we don't want to lose students in the process. We got to still keep bringing that good, good vibe, you know, we're coming back, guys, like the tiger. I'm just excited. So we just got to work together as a community. Like I said, I'm glad we were able to get this board stabilized and, you know, make very important decisions. Um, and then I was able to pop in for a minute over at the City of Westland for our new mayor, uh, Kevin Coleman, that's been sworn in. And, um, other than that, um, as my colleagues have said, definitely have an amazing Thanksgiving with your families.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I, I wanted to first thank the students from Elliott for saying the, uh, pledge tonight. Um, I also wanted to thank the, uh, board for being so welcoming to me tonight, um, and during the interview process. Um, I'm looking forward to, uh, serving with you all, and I'm looking forward to, uh, serving the district in the, uh, challenging times we're facing right now, uh, but also in the better times that, um, we all know are going to come.
Thank you, Brad. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to Mr. Gray. Is your, is your wife still here?
No, she, uh, she took the.
Okay. Somebody take a picture of him tonight, because a year from now, he's going to look differently. Congratulations and thank you to the students that led us in the pledge tonight. I want to bring up something in my comments. It's actually a recommendation, and I would ask the board to take this up at some future time. The way things have worked in our district is that the HR department sends a, a, a committee that people come in and they interview, and that is closely associated with, uh, with the superintendent, and the district makes a hire. So I, I don't want anyone to feel as if what I'm suggesting would interfere with that process at all. But I do want to make a couple of recommendations, if I could, Mr. President, to the board. And that is, when we hire at board level, we are hiring a name, and we're hiring, um, a title, what this person is going to do. Unfortunately, in a title, uh, there's not much description as to, uh, as to what this person is going to be doing in the district. So a couple of things that I want to share tonight is that I would like the board to consider that, uh, consider this at a future board meeting, and that is this. A job description be provided for all administrators in the district. And further, that future hires do not begin their service to the district until they are approved by the Board of Education. Now, um, I do not think that I am going to the starboard side of the ship in asking this. But when the board actually hires, um, a person has been already working in the district. And so, um, I want, I want to just be clear on those two points. I would like to see job descriptions for all future hires and the administrators that we have in the district now. And then, again, as I said, future hires, uh, would take place actually at the Board of Education meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to talk about something quite a bit different tonight. Uh, the district, uh, as you know, the district has issues that we're dealing with concerning budgeting, but that is not the only business going on in our school district. One of the things that have been going on in our school district for the last couple of years is tumultuous conversation about our transportation system, or our inability to have a transportation system. To tell you that in the twenty-one to twenty-two school year, this school district, uh, impacted schools forty-six thousand times with canceled bus routes. Now, that was during COVID, and we all had great challenges during COVID. But as you know, in order to combat this, the school district took a position that we were going to, uh, afford a very nice hourly rate for bus drivers, to, to attract bus drivers. And, uh, and we were able to do that, but still, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, we canceled over fifty-five routes and impacted, uh, an estimated sixty-three hundred students. Now, when you cancel a bus route and a student no longer has a ride to school, that student's parents now are late for work or scrambling at the last minute to try to find a way to get the child to school. And when the child's on our school bus headed to our school, they have reason to believe that that child's going to be safe. But, but now, with the last-minute route cancellation, all that is up in the air. And where we have been going in conversation with the superintendent isn't in limiting our transportation. What we've been talking about is, is expanding our transportation opportunities to kids. Kids do better academically when they are involved with their school building, when they're involved in extracurricular activities, when they come to the school to be mentored, to be coached. This is a positive, uh, positive thing for the kids, to work together. And a lot of them aren't able to do that, because we can't, they don't have transportation to and from school, extracurricular. So we've been talking for two years about how we can expand this service, how we can make it possible so kids can come to the school, maybe even in the summertime, and take advantage of all of the things that we have. All of this is still here in the summertime. The William D. Ford Center is still there. Uh, and, and really, uh, there's no question that when kids are, are increasingly involved in their school building, they do better. But this is a school district that spends millions of dollars and can't get the kids to school. We, we, in the twenty-three, and just this year, we've canceled bus routes twenty-seven times. Twenty-three hundred kids have been impacted, and the parents of twenty-three hundred kids. In addition to the problem of sp- spending a great deal of money for something that is not achieving the result, the one-hundred-and-second legislature passed a law last year that's going to change the way transportation systems are looked at by the law. After February of twenty-twenty-four, any school district's ability to change their relationship with their publicly-funded transportation employees is going to fundamentally change. It's going to make, the, the Board of Education will not be able to make decisions anymore. The law essentially changed that, so now the district has to go through a legal procedure in, in order to, uh, to cut costs. Tonight, you saw several board members, um, want more information about the K-12 information pro- what do we call that again?
Informed K-12.
Informed K-12. This is, this is a program that allows for communication. And in a litigious society, communication on these issues is very important, that it be concrete, and that what's going on in the school buildings is known about at the board office, uh, in the administration building. So we have, we have a situation where we've got budgeting issues, and we're spending millions of dollars on a transportation system that isn't getting the job done, and after February, we might not be able to make any changes for it. So if we're going to look at costs on something that costs forty-four thousand dollars, I want to look at costs on something that costs millions and millions of dollars, and I'm asking the administration to go out and find out what it would cost us to outsource our transportation needs to the company that will provide us this. Yes, I am absolutely serious about getting him. I'm absolut- this is my time to talk. I'm absolutely serious about developing a system where the kids can actually get to school. Yes, I am. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neal, support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.